The first of the year, January 9th, 2019. Public meeting of the Virginia Beach Planning Commission. My name is Dee Oliver and I serve as the chairman of the commission. And before we get started, I've asked Commissioner Redman to lead us in prayer and Commissioner Horsley to lead us in the pledge.
Let's bow our heads, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you today thanking you for your guidance and wisdom. As we begin this hearing today, guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought, and speech. Help us to remember our responsibility to serve our community with great insight guided by understanding, wisdom, and respect for all. As we make decisions today, help us to promote the common good as we work together for the betterment of our great city. As trusted servants, we seek blessings on our deliberations and on our efforts here today. Amen.
Would you please join me in the pledge?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Commissioner Redman and Commissioner Horsley for that. I've asked Commissioner Weiner to introduce our members, please.
Thank you, Mrs. Oliver. Sitting on the far end from me is Kaye Wilson. She is our city attorney. Next is our new commissioner, George Alrez. He is a contractor and he represents the Beach District. Next to me is Jack Wall. Jack is a civil engineer and he represents the Rose Hall District. My name is David Weiner. I'm in commercial sales and I represent the Kempsville District. Sitting next to me is Don Horsley. Don is a farmer and he is at large. Next to Don is Ron Ripley. Ron is in real estate management and development and he is also at large. Next is Dee Oliver. Dee is the chair of the planning commission. She's the funeral director and she is at large also. Next is Jan Rosinski. Jan is the vice-chair of the planning commission. She's in property management and she represents the Centerville District. The empty chair is Mike Immon. Mike's an attorney and he is at large. Then we have Dave Redman. Dave is in commercial real estate and he represents the Bayside District. Next is Whitney Graham. Whitney is in land development and he represents Lynn Haven District. And Steve Barnes. Steve is a farmer and he represents the Princess Anne District. And this will be the last time I'll be able to say this. This is Barry Frankenfield. Barry is the director of the planning department and we look forward to Barry having a nice retirement.
All right. Thank you very much.
Barry looks forward to it.
Now, I'll see if I can remember everybody's name this time. To my left is Cole Fisher and Nicole Garrido. They are your administrators to support today. Missing is Carolyn Smith and Bill Landfair. I don't know this other guy's name. He's the zoning administrator. Let me think. That's right. Kevin Kemp. Kevin Kemp. Okay. Jimmy McNamara is next to him. In the back row, we have Jonathan Sanders. We have Tori Rice, our other attorney. And our new traffic engineer, congratulations, Rick Lohman. He's the official traffic engineer now.
Oh, Rick.
And Marcel Coleman. And then in the back is Robert Davis. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Before we get officially started today, I just want to take the opportunity to welcome our three new commissioners. George Alrez, he is with the Beach District and Whitney Graham, Lynn Haven, and Mr. Steve Barnes, who is representing our Princess Anne District. Thank you. Welcome. And before we go any further, I just, we have two important people who are going to leave us. This is going to be their last meeting. We are all a bit sad about them leaving is our planning director, Barry Frankenfield. He has been with the city since 1985 and has been leading the planning department and the planning commissioners since 2015. He's been a great leader. He's taught us all. We appreciate him so much, his integrity, his candor, his sage advice, his enormous sense of humor, and endless patience with all of us. He has been a great, great asset to the city of Virginia Beach and we wish him well on his retirement. It is a huge loss for all of us and I'm sorry to see him go, truly. But I know that hopefully he'll be doing some wonderful things like playing golf and tanning on the beach and going to Charlottesville more often than not. You're very welcome. And our second one is Jimmy McNamara. He's been with the planning department since 2015. He's been promoted three times. It's a record evidently, I understand. He's senior planner and he's been, he's been great. He's got great people skills. He has great leadership qualities and technology qualities. He helped me earlier today find my password for my iPad. I have him on speed dial. And Chesapeake will be a better city because of him. We are sorry to see you go, anyway. And we wish them very much success on their new endeavors. So, thank you both very, very much.
I'm going to miss you guys. I know you think I'm joking, but I will.
We can FaceTime you, Ann. We'll livestream you.
All right.
All right. So the first order of business is the explanation of the rules. And our city clerk is going to handle that for us today.
Thank you Chairman Oliver. The planning commission of Virginia Beach takes pride in being fair and courteous to all parties in attendance. It is important that all involved understand how the commission normally conducts its meetings. It is equally important that everyone treat each other and the members of the commission with respect and civility. The commission requests that if you have a cellphone, please either silence it or turn it off. This is an abbreviated explanation of the rules. The complete set of rules is located in the front of the planning commission agenda. Following is the order of business for this public hearing. Withdrawals and deferrals. The chairman will ask if there are any requests to withdraw or defer an item on the agenda. Consideration of these requests will be made first. Consent agenda. The second order of business is the consideration of the consent agenda, which are those items that the planning commission believe are unopposed and which have favorable staff recommendations. Regular agenda. The commission will then proceed with the remaining items on the agenda. Please note that the actions taken by the commission today are in the form of a recommendation to the Virginia Beach City Council. The final decision to approve or disapprove the application will be made by the city council. The commission thanks you for your attendance and we hope your experience here today leaves you feeling that you have been heard and treated fairly. Thank you.
Thank you. The next order of business is to address those items to be deferred. And does anybody have any items to be deferred? The chair is aware of the...
Can you come forward?
Oh, I'm sorry. Can they come forward? Thank you.
Good morning, Eva.
Good morning. Can you state your name for the record, please?
My name is Charles Andrew Stevenson.
And the item number?
We, I'm one of the co-owners of Pleasure House Brewing and we'd put in an application for a conditional use permit. And we're seeking a deferral so that we can have some more time to negotiate a shared parking agreement so that we can make sure we adequately provide for the parking for our space.
Thank you very much. And is there any opposition to this item being deferred? Okay, great. Thank you very much. So I need, hold on, y'all. Sorry. A motion on the deferred item number four, please.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we defer item number four for Pleasure House Brewing LLC.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Weiner.
Who's that?
Okay. We are ready to vote.
Mr. Redman, can I have your vote?
Aye.
Mr. Redman?
Yes.
Oh, he's not here.
Oh, he's not here. He's gone.
By a recorded vote of ten to zero, item number four has been deferred.
Thank you. Do I have any items? I do have one item to be withdrawn.
Well, we just got this email that item number one is to be deferred. Requesting item one be deferred.
Okay. So, hold on. So, item one is being deferred. Is there a representative for that here today? Is there any?
Yeah, this is just a...
This is just a...
No, all right. I'm sorry.
It's a neighbor request.
It's a neighbor request. There is a little bit of confusion with that. So that, thank you, Cole. All right. We will move on to the withdrawn. Is there an item to be withdrawn? The chair is aware of D1 of the city of Virginia Beach to be withdrawn. Is there a representative for that here today?
Yes, Commissioner Oliver. The city requests a withdrawal of that item.
Great. Thank you. And is there any opposition to this being withdrawn from the agenda? Hearing none. May I have a motion to withdraw item number D1, please?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to withdraw item D1 from the city of Virginia Beach from the agenda.
Second.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Redman, Mr. Horsley?
I think I pushed it before you said it was open, so, sorry.
By a recorded vote of ten to zero, item D1 has been withdrawn.
The next order of business, we will address those that are placed on the consent agenda and the vice-chair will handle this portion of the agenda.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chairman. This afternoon, we have four items on the consent agenda. The first matter to be heard is item number one. This is an application for a conditional rezoning, R10 residential and I1 light industrial, two conditional I1 light industrial on property located on the west side of South Birdneck Road approximately 680 feet from Carissa Court in the Beach District. Do we, we have a representative?
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Madam Chair, for the record, Eddie Burdon, Jimby's attorney, representing Clear Creek Holdings. We appreciate this item being on the consent agenda. Worked diligently with your city staff on this request and have provided answers to the questions that were raised in the inform this morning about access and parking. And my client is also, he will be putting in bumper socks as you had suggested, Mr. Ripley. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there, so this is going to be reviewed by Commissioner Redman.
Thank you. This is an application of Clear Creek Holdings LLC for conditional rezoning from R10 residential and I1 light industrial, conditional I1 light industrial on property located on the west side of South Birdneck Road. The subject site is zoned both R10 residential district on the eastern portion of the lot fronting South Birdneck Road and I1 light industrial district on the western portion of the lot. The applicant is requesting to rezone the entire site to conditional I1 light industrial in order to construct three buildings, and you see them there, that will contain 38 industrial office and warehouse units. Site is about 4.3 acres and sits on an undeveloped forested lot. It is also located in accident potential zone two and is encumbered by a Navy easement which restricts certain land uses in the high noise zones near Naval Air Station Oceana. So each business will need to obtain a separate determination letter from the Navy to ensure that its proposed use, then the building meets the terms of the easement. There was some discussion this morning about the number of parking spaces, the appropriateness of the number of parking spaces. The applicant helpfully provided some additional data that we did not have this morning. Total number of parking spaces will be 119. Eighteen of those spaces will be in the front, a loading space in the rear, and approximately 100 parking spaces in front of or along the open space internal to the center. So, which comes out to a little over three parking spaces per unit. The commission is unaware of any opposition to this application. Staff recommends approval. The planning commission therefore concurs by consent. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Redman. The next matter on the agenda is item number three, and that's an application for a conditional use permit for automobile repair garage on property located at 5479 Virginia Beach Boulevard in the Kempsville District. Is there a representative here for that, for this application? And when you get to the mic, can you please state your name for the record?
David Proshue.
And are the conditions on the application acceptable to you?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone here in opposition of this matter being placed on the consent agenda? Hearing none, the commission has asked Commissioner Weiner to explain this for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Redman. This is a request for a conditional use permit for an automobile repair garage. The site was currently developed with a 42,000 square foot car stereo installation business. As this operator's lease is expiring in the near future, the applicant submitted a conditional use permit to operate the automobile repair garage at this location. The garage will provide maintenance such as oil changes, air conditions, suspension repair, brakes, shocks, and tire installations, minor engine and transmission work, and Virginia state inspections. The applicant does not intend to do any bodywork, painting, or overhaul of transmissions on the subject site. Repairs and the storage of materials will occur within the building. There will be no significant modifications to the site or the exterior of the building. We recommend approval and put it on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Weiner. The next item on the agenda is item number five, and that's an application for a conditional use permit, indoor and outdoor recreation facility on property located at 1832 Kempsville Road, Suite 13 in the Centerville District. Is there a representative here for that matter? And as you come to the mic, can you state your name for the record?
Name's Alvin Lapatin.
And are the conditions acceptable to you?
They are.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone here in opposition to this application being placed on the consent agenda? All right. Seeing none, the chairman has asked Commissioner Wall to review this item for the record.
Okay, thank you. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for both an indoor recreation facility and an outdoor recreation facility in order to operate a 24-hour fitness center. The indoor portion of the operation is planned within Kempsville Crossing Shopping Center. It is anticipated that 14 employees will work at the facility, which will be staffed from 8:00 to 10:00 p.m. weekly. The outdoor recreation facility is requested in order to provide for the training of clients or small groups of up to 12 in an outdoor area located directly at the rear of the unit of approximately 12 feet by 50 feet. Activities will be limited to daylight hours and will be used for exercises such as sandbags, tire flips, battle ropes, and yoke carriers. There will be no speakers, monitors, or amplification of music or instructions outside. A non-illuminated eight-foot-by-six-foot flat sign is proposed to be installed on the exterior of the building above the main entrance. With the exception of the new signage, no other changes are proposed to the exterior of the building. The conditions are acceptable to the applicant. There is no known opposition and staff recommends approval. Therefore, we place this item on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Wall. The next item on the consent agenda is item number seven, is the applicant for that item here. That is an application for a conditional use permit for a family daycare home on property located at 8457 South Oliver Drive in the Bayside District.
Hello, my name is Victoria Weston Orland.
Are the applications acceptable to you?
Yes, they are.
Is there anyone here that's in opposition to this matter being placed on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none. The chairman has asked Commissioner Ripley to review this for the record, please.
Thank you very much. This is a application for a family daycare in a neighborhood, in a house in a neighborhood on South Oliver Drive, 4857 South Oliver Drive. And it's a very routine. This is a tip by right. You can have four children under a daycare, used as a daycare in a house in a residential neighborhood. And the applicant's asking for 12. The staff has been out and reviewed it and looked at the yard and looked at the conditions and has recommended that this be approved. It's pretty routine for us to do that. We really do like seeing daycare within the neighborhoods. It helps a lot of families out that wouldn't otherwise have access to this type of service. There are six conditions that are applied to it. The applicants agree to it. The planning commission is recommending approval too. So we put it on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Ripley. Madam Oliver, that is the last item on the consent agenda. So I would like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items number one, three, five, and seven.
Second.
All right.
By a recorded vote of ten to zero, agenda items one, three, five, and seven have been approved by consent.
All right. I'd like to thank all the applicants who had a matter on the consent agenda today. And these items will now be scheduled to be heard in front of city council. The next order of business, we'll address the many matters on our agenda. And before you start, I just want to remind everybody here that if you signed up to speak, to be respectful of our time limits. You have three minutes and the yellow light blinks and then the red one and then I have to, I have to ask you to sit down. So be mindful of your time before we get started. And I'll ask the city clerk to go ahead and call the first item up, please.
The first order of business is agenda item number two, Richard C. Trotman and Seven Cities Tattoo LLC. It's an application for a subdivision variance of section 4.4B of subdivision regulations. Conditional rezoning B1 neighborhood business to conditional B2 community business and conditional use permit tattoo parlor on property located at 5296, 5298, 5300, 5302, 5304, 5306, 5308, 5310, 5312, 5314, 5316, and 5318 at Providence Road. Is there a representative here for the application?
Can you come forward?
Mr. Graham, do you have a conflict of interest you'd like to have in the record?
I do know the applicant, the property owner, but I do not have an interest in the project.
So you intend to vote?
I do.
Thank you. Welcome. How are you? Could you state your name for the record, please?
Yes, it's Richard Trotman.
Would you go ahead and tell us a bit about the application?
We're just trying to go from B1 to B2. All of the other commercial properties in our area are B2 already, I believe. And I thought this was just a kind of a normal upgrade to our type of zoning that we're, would then be able to rent on a broader scope of the folks that are coming to us to rent from us. So that's basically our reason for doing it. We probably wouldn't have done it had the gentleman from the Seven Cities Tattoo approached us to rent and we understand that we need to enhance our zoning to accommodate seven cities.
Okay. All right. Well, we have somebody that, do you want to tell us about your application real quick? Are you the gentleman that is the applicant with the Seven Cities Tattoo?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, would you like to tell us a little bit about your application and then we'll hear from the opposition?
Sir?
Okay.
My name is John Vlaster. Thanks for hearing us. Our application was to open up a, not a traditional tattoo parlor. It's just me and my partner. We have operated independent contractors licenses for the better part of six or seven years now, so we have an established clientele. And that is basically, what we're going to continue doing is operating with the clientele that we have. It's not a walk-in studio. It's not going to be traffic generating. We're probably only going to have five or six parking spots occupied at the time. It'll be a gallery space slash tattoo area, but we're not out there howling at the moon. We're more interested in going in to take care of what we have to and getting back and spend time with your families.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. And I want you all to take a seat and we'll have you back up after we hear from the speakers.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have two speakers in opposition, Wanda Ainge and Lena Levine. Please state your name for the record, ma'am.
I'm Wanda Ainge. 721 Walton Drive. And I actually live right behind where they want to put this tattoo parlor.
I'm Lenee Levine. Thank you for hearing us today. I also live on Walton Drive, which is adjacent to the area where they're asking to have the strip mall rezoned and...
Let me, I hate to interrupt you ladies. Would you all like to speak separately?
That would be just fine. Either way is absolutely fine.
What do you want us to do?
Probably separately might be a little bit easier.
You want me to sit down?
No. Why don't you go ahead and then we'll start this way.
All right. Well, I guess one of my main concern is for Fairfield Square Shopping Center to be rezoned from the community shopping center to the business because all that we have in there are communities. And we live on Walton Drive where, as you come off Providence Road, there's a, I believe it's a four-story medical center there. It's Centerra Medical Center. They do not have adequate parking for their employees or their patients. So we've had to fight that for, I've been in that, on that street for 35 years. So when you turn off Providence Road, you come into Walton, which would be right behind this facility they want to put in. We have cars lined up where sometimes, I'm not sure, a fire truck could get through there. So we don't need any more traffic in that area. I don't know how much a tattoo parlor, but would bring in as far as traffic. But I really don't want it changed from a community business at this time. We feel like it's not necessary. There's so many other places right around there that's already zoned.
Right. And do you mind, I think there's a pointer right there. There's a little black box on your left side. And if you take that and press the top button, you can show us exactly where you live.
You can take it off.
You can take it off. You can pick it up and there you go. And you can show us...
Okay, so let me look. Weiner, Walton, there's Walton Drive. And as you come off Providence Road, so I guess that's the, is that the little shopping center?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
So as you go down Walton Drive, I live probably right there.
Okay.
It's Mark's house. Except Mark's house, huh? Well, you know, I live there. Okay, well, you know what? I live at one of these houses.
There you go. Did anybody have any questions?
Yeah, can I?
Yes. Commissioner Weiner.
I know what you're talking about because I live right around the corner. And I know the office building can get very packed, the medical office building. I've seen it.
Extremely.
Yes. But to go back to where, what we're talking about, what's in front of us right now is a B1, there's B1 neighborhood business, got a B2. They could put other businesses in there that could actually draw more crowd, draw more parking, draw more people than what they're trying to do now. So go from a B1, we could get our zoning inspector to explain to you a little bit better than I can. But what can be done could draw more parking than what they're trying to do now. That's what I'm getting at.
Okay. But even then, would it not have to be rezoned to...
Okay, but even then, would it not have to be rezoned to go from the community to business?
No, not, no, they could be a B1 neighborhood with another type of business in there that's like in there now.
Can you give me an example? Because right now...
Well, I was going to get our zoning inspector behind you, Mr. Kemp. Can you, can you explain for us just better than I can, for a B1 to B2, what type of businesses that could go in there that could draw more parking in there?
B1 is generally, it's our neighborhood, commercial zoning district. The intense, uses tend to be less intense. B2 is our standard commercial zoning district. The more intense uses that differentiate between B1 and B2 tend not to be in strip centers. The main differences are that B2 permit uses such as fast food restaurants with drive-throughs and that level of traffic and intensity, those uses aren't in B1. But in this particular situation, those types of uses wouldn't be conducive with a strip center. But a majority of the commercial property located in the city is B2.
Right, but still, a lot of communities have community shopping centers that don't go to business. You know, I really don't know why they want to go in there when there's so many that are ready.
Ma'am, do you mind turning around and speaking? I know, I know, but you can, I know.
I'm not sure he answered David's question then.
Well, maybe...
Did he, David?
Yes, he did.
Well, that I don't understand it then.
Maybe, so this particular applicant, maybe I can, maybe I can explain a little bit. When he came up and he stated, he is not, he is not the typical tattoo parlor in the fact that he is door, he has an open door policy for just on-street. He has certain clients that he deals with by appointment only. They also, in this application, proffered from a B1 to a B2. So this applicant made a list of proffers not to have when they, when they go to the zoning to a B2. And it says here, animal pounds, these are things that they could have.
I read them.
Okay. So they've proffered in there that these will not be in the shopping center?
Well...
And these are the ones that are typical with a B2, but they, these will not be businesses that you will see.
Well, right now, Dee, everyone, excuse me, at this time, that little community shopping center, everybody closes early, you know, 6:00. The latest is a nail business, the latest is 7:00. What are the hours going to be for the tattoo?
I think his hours are...
It says it up here.
Do you have, I have to...
Seven.
Seven o'clock?
Yeah. 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Yeah, 10 to 7:00. By, and from what I understand, but we can ask him when he comes back up.
Oh, okay.
Some more questions for you.
Okay.
Okay?
Well, the sign says 10 to 6:00.
It's 10 to 6:00. Well, the sign says 10 to 6:00, Kevin. The application says 7:00, but the sign says 6:00.
Right.
Jimmy?
Their application stated their hours between 10 and 7:00, but I'm sure they can give some clarification on whether or not that sign...
Well, can I ask one more question?
Yes, ma'am.
On one of these, it says that no bars can be put in there, even if it's changed. But couldn't they go before the commission and ask to go in, just like they're doing?
Um...
I don't, I don't know. That's what I'm astounded.
They would have to come back in front of us.
They'd have to come back.
So they would literally could go in there, they just have to come back and ask?
Well, they'd have...
Go ahead.
It's a proffer, it's a proffer they're making, so it becomes part of the zoning. It's not a condition, it's a, you can't do it. You'd have to come back through this whole public process.
Right, but, okay, but if a tattoo parlor can get approved, then...
It could happen on any property.
Then, you know, a bar could get approved or whatever.
It'd have to go through the public process.
Well, I don't want to go over my three minutes, so that's my proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You want to call the next?
For me, please.
Next, we have Linna Levine. Please state your name for the record.
Yes, it's Linna Levine. And I live at 732 Walton Drive, which is right adjacent, on Walton Drive, as you can see, is adjacent to the piece of property that we're talking about. And there are a number of residential properties that are directly abutting this property from, from the rear. And we, well, I feel like, as you can see, Fairfield and Providence Square Shopping Centers are already zoned B2, as is the property across Providence, so that if a business wanted to be in a B2 community business zone, they, there are many properties available there. And there is the office building also, that as was mentioned by the, by Mrs. Ainge, that does limit the, the egress and exit from Walton Drive. Walton Drive is really just a two-lane road, but there is parking that usually is employee parking that is available there on the right-hand side of the street as you enter Walton Drive. So it, and obviously, if we take this property from a B1 to a B2, it's not ever going back to a B1.
Right.
And so my concern is that, that we continue to have it as a neighborhood business, community, and not a neighborhood business zoning as opposed to a community business zoning.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions for Mrs. Levine?
Just a comment, and looking, looking at the map, I don't, you know, you talk about Walton Drive, and that's where y'all's interests is to your neighborhood.
Yes.
This property does not have a curb cut on Walton Drive, the way I read it in the, on the maps that we have. Curb cuts on Providence. So you wouldn't have traffic going from this out onto Walton Drive, or from turning Walton Drive to access this property, unless I'm reading the map wrong.
Yeah, they don't.
Isn't that right?
Correct.
So, so the traffic is not going to affect Walton Drive?
The city actually takes care of the grass line between, as you can see where the blue line outlines this. It does, there is, there's an easement, which is basically a city easement, and the city takes care of that piece of grass. So, you know, it is the closest property to Walton Drive at that location.
Yeah, I understand that, but I mean, traffic doesn't go out of, from this piece of property does not access Walton Drive, is what I'm trying to tell you. According to the maps that we have, is that right, Jimmy? So, so this really, really, traffic going to this business was, is not going on Walton Drive?
It does affect our traffic flow, as a matter of fact. I have often seen persons, and of course, this is not a legal move, however, if you go back to your previous picture, you'll see that if you are coming from, if you are coming from the west, moving in an easterly direction, there is a turn lane that would allow you to turn onto Walton Drive. I often see people go onto the wrong side of Providence Road to enter the driveway opening on Providence, so that they're actually moving in a, in an easterly direct, direction on the part of Providence Drive where they should be moving in a westerly direction. And obviously, that is illegal, and a person should not be doing that. But it does cause a potential hazard for us as residents. And it's, it's not my, my job, nor as far as I know, am I able to report that kind of illegal or dangerous action. But that does happen.
Any other questions for Mrs. Levine? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, are there any other speakers?
No more speakers.
All right, so if the applicant would like to come up for rebuttal, please. Both of you can come on up, that'll be fine. State your names again for the record, and then you can address their, their questions about the property.
My name is Rick Trotman. I'm the owner of the property, but I am not going to be involved in the tattoo parlor. But John has told me...
Do you want to speak in the mic?
Sure.
For me, thank you.
Sorry.
It's okay.
John has told me on a number of occasions, the way he's going to operate this is not like a, you know, people are going to be coming and coming into his establishment on a walk-in basis. It's, I'm sorry, walking away from this. But it's a one or two person a day, I think you said, it's probably... Yeah. And that person would come and have a lot of work done. I don't have a tattoo, I'm probably the only person in the world that does it. It's not going to be a typical tattoo parlor with whatever that would bring as far as numbers of people are concerned. I think that's the concern, ladies, is the number of people that you're concerned about.
Well, I think we're right, Steve.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what, let's...
John can I think, address how he's going to operate?
All right. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
It's John Blaster. I believe concerns were...
Was, one was traffic?
Traffic? Well, I can't speak on behalf of B2. Obviously, it's up there, what is and isn't allowed, and that's going to be his concern. But we're not going to be hindering the traffic in what, any way, shape, or form. As far as I've seen, anytime I've come up to that establishment, there's plenty of parking opportunity, enough so that the people that are actually parking on the other side of the fence that these women are talking about could probably occupy. We don't want them to, but...
Right.
We're not going to be hindering parking opportunities. Hours, as stated, I believe we did submit two different hours there. I think we're closing at 6:00.
6:00?
Yeah, is what we've decided to establish.
And about how much traffic do you typically generate from your establishment?
Well, we're going to be closed Sundays and Mondays. We'll have a gallery open on Tuesday. Traffic, as stated, we only tattoo one person a day each. So the total number of cars won't exceed four or five.
Right.
And as far as why we decided to come into this particular zoning and try to change it to B2 is because the word tattoo has a traditional stigma. Not many people like it and appreciate what it has to offer, at least these days. So having been blessed with coming in contact with Mr. Trotman here, he was the first person in months that was able actually to get past that word and hear us out as far as what we had planned to do and what we envisioned for our business. So that's, while there is plenty of other B2s available, it's hard to find a landlord that is actually open to hear what we had to say, so.
Great, thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Could I add one?
Yes, sir, absolutely. Step right on up.
I went to my tenants, who are there right now, and they kind of looked at me like I was, you know, what are you asking us for? It's your building, you rent to whoever you want to. But I wanted to make sure that that stigma of tattoo, because in my generation, tattoos weren't what they are today. And just about everybody who is in my structure has someone, or a number of people who have a tattoo. So the world changes, and we're just trying to be a part of what the world is given.
Thank you.
So, yes, sir.
One question.
Commissioner Weiner.
Looking at the proffers that you've come up with, with staff, are you very comfortable with keeping that, I know what this is, it's a very small place, you're not going to put a nightclub or a bar in there?
No.
Are you very, so you're comfortable with the proffers here, that you're not going to come back and want to change anything?
We're actually, I'm 74, so I'm getting a little older, and I don't think I'm going to be operating the business, you know, forever. What I thought, the B2 would enhance our ability, or the ability of whoever owns the property, to go to different people. But it's a community building, you know, and we're going to keep that. We don't, we don't want to have a bar in there. We don't really want to have fast food. I don't think our facilities are large enough to accommodate that, that, those kind of businesses, and we're not looking for that. We're just a little mom and pop operation that, how do I convey, you know, we're just trying to be a neighborhood organization. So even though it's community, it's not, no longer has, will have neighborhood in the zoning, we're going to operate it just the way we've always operated it. And I don't think it will ever change. I don't think that the supply and demand equation is going to bring people into our small shopping center who are going to be of that type of, of a business. So, just, you know, I did ask my tenants, they all have some kind of a tattoo, or someone does in their organization, which is interesting, because we don't, but most people seem to know.
Right. Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
And he really answered my question. I was just wondering what his other, the other tenants in the complex thought, and so nobody had any objection.
No, they all kind of said, it's your building, you rent to who you want to. I don't do that. I try to keep everybody, it's, it's a nice organization. Everybody gets along, everybody likes one another, and that's the way we want to keep it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Anybody have any more questions for the gentleman?
I have a question for Trotman.
Well, well, you, I'm sorry. No, ma'am. No, ma'am, I'm sorry. We have to kind of stick it to the, to the format.
I'll, I'll reach you out.
I wasn't doing any good. I was just going to comment, I have a tattoo, so I don't have a stigma. I have a problem with it. We'll be permanent.
Well, you know what, we're going to, excuse me, one second, but we, it's out of order, we can't really have that conversation, I'm sorry. So if we, if the commissioners don't have any more questions, then thank you very much. And, thank you. We're going to close the hearing now and open it for discussion amongst the commissioners. Yes, sir, Commissioner Weiner.
Listening to the applicant and reading through the proffers, I'm comfortable in supporting this and ready to make a motion. Nobody else have a comment?
Do we have any comments? Mr. Reddick?
Well, I do want to address one point, and that is, I want to say, B2 zoning is entirely appropriate for this piece of real estate. This is Providence Road. There's 22,700 cars that front this piece of property. It is not a small roadway. And the idea that, that, that there's something inappropriate about that, there are thousands of properties in the city that are in similarly situated parcels of land, they're zoned B2. And the building is what the building is. It's not going to support a whole bunch of uses simply by virtue of its structure. He's proffered out a number of objectionable uses. And I look down on this tenant list, at least, that's what's on this, you know, on the sign that we all have in our packet, it's nail shop, maids, salon, jewelry store. There's nothing that this business would do that would be functionally different in terms of traffic, or any kind of, you know, objectionable impact that, that these other small businesses do. This is a business center as it is, and it'll stay a business center, just with an additional tenant that fits into the zoning. Much too much has been made of that. So I agree with Mr. Weiner, and I'll certainly support his motion.
All right. Yes, sir, Commissioner Wall.
We had a similar application a couple of years ago, and, you know, I opposed, I kind of opposed it. It was the same format, you know, B1, B2, the same use, and much more prominent location, I feel, on Rosemont and Holland, and, but I drive by there all the time, you know, since then, and since it's been approved, and it seems to have very little impact. I think, you know, we talked to the city staff, and they said that, you know, there hasn't been, you know, an impact to the, you know, residents, to the area, so... hasn't been, you know, an impact to the, you know, residents, to the area, so, you know, I support it as well.
All right. We have, anybody else?
Do we, I'm just, this is just an order of business, guess, do we need to make sure that the 6:00 closing time is in the application?
I think that, um...
I didn't hear you.
Is that 6:00?
If you're on the application, you just submitted the sign, it's just...
So, I just want to ask, is it, do you mind coming up one more time?
Just for...
Thank you, just, just for clarity here.
And maybe we've caused the confusion, the staff report notes the hours from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM. The conceptual sign exhibit for the wall-mounted sign for the tattoo studio shows operating hours up to 6:00 PM. So if you would like to make a condition that would limit the hours, that's certainly your prerogative.
If there's no objection to the time that's listed right now, I'm just not trying to add any more paperwork to the...
Right, no, there's, I don't, I don't know that there'll be any more paperwork, but we just want to, I think what they're asking is, that we have two things, in the application, you're open till 7:00.
That's fine.
And then, but your sign says you're open to 6:00, so we're...
I didn't know there was going to be that, that strict as far as the sign was concerned, I thought you just needed a layout, but as far as...
So is that just a layout?
It was just a layout.
So 7:00 is your closing hour?
We can do 7:00, that's fine. If it's, if it's better to do 6:00?
Mr. McNamara?
Whatever time you feel is appropriate, you can certainly recommend adding that condition. The commission.
Do, are you opposed to 6:00?
We are not.
All right, well, would, that probably would, would make, probably be more conforming to the, to, to the yoga studio and probably everything else that's there, so 6:00, if you, if that's good with you.
Well, I just bet you a hundred bucks a yoga studio's open past 6:00.
We are.
Oh.
I mean, I, I think we're getting way wrapped around the axle here.
All right, why don't we just stick with the original application, 7:00, and thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, guys.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor right now, yes, sir, Commissioner Weiner.
I may make motion for approval.
Are you adding the condition that they...
Adding the condition that they stay on, open until 7:00?
It's already in there.
Which is already on there, which is in our application, that's why we were confused.
I'm sorry, it's in the dialogue in your staff report, but it's not a recommended condition, so you would need to add that to your conditions, that, that's why I was seeking that clarification, I apologize for the confusion.
We'll add that to our commission, to our conditions. 7:00 closing, motion made by Commissioner Weiner, seconded by Commissioner Redmond. Thank you.
Vote is open.
By a recorded vote of 10 to 0, item number 2 has been approved.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have item number 6, LBH LLC, an application for conditional rezoning, R-7.5 residential to conditional A-24 apartment on property located at 463 North Witch Duck Road and the two vacant parcels to the south. Is there a representative for this application?
Madam Chair, for the record, Eddie Burdon, which is attorney representing LBH. With me this afternoon is Mr. Rob Prodan, who is the manager, managing member of LDH, LDH, excuse me. My clients have worked on assembling these three parcels on the west side of Witch Duck Road for two years, and have put together the properties and with dialogue with city staff all the way throughout, Jonathan and Carolyn Smith, and, and more recently with Bill Lanfair as well. The subject property is on the west side of Witch Duck Road, a major arterial highway with a median break, medium strip, there is no median break. To our north is which, excuse me, Whittaker Place, which was rezoned in 2012, and I'm fairly certain that I did that rezoning, and I, as a part of that rezoning, it was a required proffer that they provide the ability to access this property or an assemblage of properties, since there are three, there are three lots involved in this in the future in order to help create some cohesiveness along there, so that's, and that's a 23-unit condominium, that is, got underlying A-12 with a PDH zoning in place. The folks at Lyle Design Group, the architects, have done, I think, a very nice job with this project. This is a condominium units for sale in two buildings, they're one and two-bedroom units, the anticipated prices will be in the mid 200s for the units as they are sold. The building materials are proffered, and as I, as I think you all are aware, the portion of the, in addition to the board and batten and the, the brick waterboard and the shake siding, there is lap siding, and the lap siding, we will revise the proffer between here and city council, that it will be the premium vinyl lap siding, which I know you all are familiar with, and it's not, not like the, the old, old-time vinyl siding where you get a lot of different problems with over time with, with maintenance, but this will be a condominium, everything will be maintained by the association. The only reason this is an A-24 is because of the lot coverage, because of the parking area, and the drive aisles are all counted as lot coverage in the apartment zoning district, the density is 17 and 1/2 units per acre, it's 28 units. By contrast, Whittaker Place to the north has 23 units, they are on single, well, single-family condominium units, buildings, and if you look at the, the two side by side, there's a lot more open space and open area that's usable, and I'd say there's a huge amount, there's none frankly at Whittaker Place, because they're just, because of the way it's designed with the single family. This does allow for a lot less building on the property than there, but, you know, they're compatible density-wise and value-wise. All the drainage, stormwater drainage from this project will go into Witch Duck Lake, which is a regional BNP, will not cause anybody any flooding or other similar issues. The access is a right-in and right-out on North Witch Duck Road, major arterial highway with capacity. Because the units are one and two-bedroom units, there are, won't be a great deal of school impacts, but all the schools in the, in the area in this district are under capacity, and this section of Witch Duck Road, as I travel it fairly often, is not one that is, if all, if all roads were as effective in moving traffic as this section of, of North Witch Duck Road, we wouldn't have any traffic problems. Obviously, between the boulevard and 264 is somewhat problematic now, but it, it will soon be better with the road improvements that are taking place there. Staff has recommended approval of this item, we greatly appreciate that recommendation, we've worked closely with staff, and this was on the consent agenda earlier. The, one thing I'll, a couple of things I'll mention, we are aware of this letter that came in late yesterday from the Aragona Village Civic League, which we do not abut, and we're across, across this major arterial from, but we will reach out to them and have a meeting with them before this matter goes to city council. And on the first page of the staff report, it indicates that the property to the north is zoned R-7.5, it's in fact PDH with an A-12, which is the Whittaker Place that I was speaking about, but it's correct elsewhere in the, in the right of it. With that, be happy to answer any questions any of you may have regarding this application.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Burdon? Okay, thank you. You want to go ahead and call?
We have one speaker in opposition, George Hayden. Please state your name for the record, sir.
Good afternoon, I'm George Hayden, I'm at 448 North Witch Duck Road, that is just across the, I mean arterial road, as they said, for Witch Duck and three above North Erskine Road.
There's a pointer right there, if you'd like to use it, and you can show us.
Right there. And I have three concerns, one is a density, as Witch Duck Place is enveloped with 23 total units, that was not present when I reside, when I first moved to Witch Duck Road, which was five years ago, well, five and a half years ago, and that's the concern primarily because of rising tax rates, and a lot of my neighbors have expressed concern about that, including Aragona Civic League. And as you can tell, it's just been tree line space, which gives me my second concern, which is the amount of water that accumulates. This is going to be insoluble surface area, which will not be able to absorb rainfall. As stated, that Witch Duck Lake, which is behind the property, is not a sufficient source for the rainfall, because I was here for the remnants of Hurricane Matthew, which was about two and a half years ago. Witch Duck Road was flooded, and the water was not quite reaching the doorways, but when vehicles had passed, as they were going slower, about 10, 15 miles an hour, it would cause a bit of a wake, which would creep up onto the grass of our yards. So, as I say, if you could please go back to the last slide.
Jonathan, can you go back to the street aerial view, please?
So these, this side, you can tell that the buildings or the houses there are about 10 feet from the street, from the road, and that was a concern for floodwaters, Hurricane Matthew. Let's say the water was about eight inches deep on Witch Duck Road, which was over the curb and onto the sidewalk. And my third concern is regards to, give me one, the, the traffic, you know, say the 58 spaces for parking, the traffic already backs up at 4:00 PM to this area, stand, the standstill traffic, that's southbound Witch Duck Road, it's two lanes, it's not that major of a road, and is a, already a state, well, as we already know that light rail's not coming to that part of the city, and really, it wouldn't alleviate the traffic much beyond the 58 parking spaces, and I just want to say that, with those, with traffic backing up about there.
Okay.
Ambulances, EMS crews that run through the street many times, won't be able to efficiently do their job in times of, after school.
Thank you. Mr. Hayden, unfortunately, your three minutes has passed, our red light doesn't seem to be working today, and so, but we will, do, we have any questions for Mr. Hayden? Any commissioners, any questions? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you for my time, for your time.
Thank you. Any more speakers?
No more speakers.
All right, Mr. Burdon, would you like to come up for the rebuttal, please?
Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Graham has something in regard to his conflict of interest.
I, I do know the applicant, but I do not have a financial interest in the, in the project.
So you intend to vote?
I do.
Thank you.
The issue, as far as stormwater is concerned, I'm not personally familiar with any flood damage that took place in this area, and as we all know, the stormwater in Virginia Beach being that is predominantly flat during storm events, the roads are where the water is supposed to be, if there are bad enough storm event, versus in people's houses, but all of the stormwater drainage from this development will be captured, none of it will be going into Witch Duck Road, it will be going into Witch Duck Lake, which is a regional BNP with ample capacity to handle the outfall of stormwater from this property. And the, again, the amount of development itself, the buildings themselves do not occupy that much of the site comparatively speaking, but the parking lot is the reason, because in the A zoning district, if that parking and drive aisles count, that's why the A-24 for 17 and 1/2 units per acre. The gentleman lives on the opposite side of Witch Duck Road, which is a, has a median all the way down it, the only access that they have is a right-in and right-out, similarly, this development, the access that it will have is a right-in and right-out. Consequently, and again, there is, there's ample capacity on this section of Witch Duck Road, but the, you know, the impact to the northbound or eastern side of Witch Duck Road of this development frankly is pretty minor if, if any that's real measurable. Hospital up to the, the north, if they're going to hospital, they're on, on the opposite side of the road from this development, so I'm, I'm not, not really following the progression of the, of the logical argument that this somehow will have an impact on the ability of, an ambulance to get to the hospital, but be happy to answer any questions, we think it's a high-quality addition. We have B2 property to the north of Whittaker Place and other B2 properties to the south, and this is on, again, a major arterial highway, developing it like Aragona Village, nothing, Aragona Village is a nice neighborhood, but we don't want to see what's over here with a bunch of curb cuts all along the road, and that's what this type of cohesive development doesn't have, removes that possibility. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Burdon? Yes.
So condo association, that, that's right, just homeownership, is that?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Exactly right. Yes, it's, it will be a for-sale homeowner, you know, product.
Any other questions for Mr. Burdon?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll close and open it up to discussion for the commissioners. Mr. Redmond?
Madam Chairman, Chairwoman, I, it's going to take me a little while.
That's all right, I'm good with it.
I would move approval of the application.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All right, call for the question.
Sir, sir.
All right.
By a recorded vote of 10 to 0, item number 6, LBH LLC has been approved.
Yes, sir. Indulged for a second, what, what you said at the beginning of the meeting about Mr. Frankenfield and Jimmy, couldn't have been said any better, I just want to echo what you had to say there.
Thank you.
As Robert as well, excellent city employees, if there ever were to be a City of Virginia Beach Employee Hall of Fame, while Barry wouldn't be the GOAT, he would definitely be in it, and...
I am in it, by the way.
You are in it already? Oh, wow, they have to raise you up.
That didn't mean anything.
Well, I'm glad to hear that. Congratulations. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, lastly, we have agenda item number 8, which is Traditional Concepts Inc. and Victory Baptist Church of Virginia Beach, Inc. This is an application for modification of conditions, religious use, conditional rezoning, R-15 residential to conditional R-10 residential, and subdivision variance, section 4.4B of the subdivision regulations on property located at 4125 Indian River Road. Is there a representative for this application? Please state your name for the record, sir.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, my name is John Napier, I'm a Virginia Beach attorney with Pangor Law. I'm happy to be in front of you all this afternoon, thank you for having us. I'm also joined by the applicant, Mr. Wayne Crosby, with Traditional Concepts. In the back room, I'm also joined by Pastor Smith and his lovely wife with Victory Baptist Church here as well. I, I've come into this a little bit midstream, but, and I know that the current city planner, Mr. Saunders, has as well, but this has been almost a four-year process, frankly, when the conversation started with city planning, and you all have actually already seen this application, which I know most of you well know. This is a rezoning, the church is going to stay, the parking lot shifts a little bit, you all know that. The applicant is proposing to do 14 lots, there's an existing home, parishioner residence there, that's lot 13, and then there'll be 13 other new homes here for this application. I know, again, you all are familiar with the architecture, I'm happy to go through that if you'd like, I think they're wonderful quality homes, hardy plank siding, brick... I think they're wonderful quality homes, hardy plank siding, brick and stone accents. I think you all have seen that as well before. And I know that there had been a recommendation from staff. You all had approved the application as it had been. And frankly, the reason it didn't move forward to city council after that is because of, and again, many of you well know, there were drainage issues with Hillcrest Meadows right next door. And the applicant had agreed to wait because the city was working out some of those drainage issues. And two and a half years have gone by, and here we are now. I understand that the staff recommendation at this point, unfortunately, is a denial for three issues as I see them, as, as reported in the staff report. One had to do with part of how the engineer, our engineer, had done the entranceway. That has been rectified, and I believe staff mentioned that this morning, that I don't think that that's an issue anymore before you all. Second of all, was the southeastern parkway. We know that's still on the master transportation plan. However, I, I do want to just make note of the original staff report, and I know Mr., Dr. White had been the original planner, but as noted in that original staff report, there were several plans, when this was originally brought up to city, that included the parkway. There were about at least six or seven months of discussions with the city. The applicant brought this to the city, and the city said that they were not interested in that property. They were not interested in purchasing it. And, and they, and to quote the staff report from before, based on this information and internal discussions among city teams and leadership, the conclusion was reached that the city was not going to purchase the rear of the subject property. Therefore, the applicant was informed that the rear of the site could be used for development. So that was the staff report from June of 2016. And that's, we've, the applicant has continued to move forward based upon that presumption up until this latest staff report came out. And again, I'm certainly sympathetic to Mr. Saunders because he, he's come in to take over this application as well. So I, I understand he's working with the information he has. The, the last item that I understand was an issue, and I will make one other note. There was a recommendation for an added proffer to make sure there was a minimum elevation of, I believe, 8.33 feet. Is that correct? And the applicant has no problem with that. I'll work with staff to add in that proffer. That's not going to be an issue. The last issue has to do with whether there's a subdivision variance needed. The original plan that was approved by a planning commission before, on the cul-de-sac lots, actually had similar, the similar widths that the current plan has. The only difference on this current plan from the plan that you all had approved in 2016 is they've added in a BNP. They've gone through the preliminary stormwater, and they've added in the BNP system. And I know there was some comment about how that stormwater facility, the pond, kind of juts up there. But in the discussions with the engineer, this is the capacity needed to be able to serve that because the existing stormwater facility to the north cannot be used by any of these new homes, because that's already been committed to Hillcrest above, which is, I guess, to the, to the west. So that existing stormwater facility is already been committed, and so those other two ponds that you see there, here and here, are needed to be able to, to service a development. These, again, as I was saying, these four cul-de-sac lots are actually in conformance with the exact same way that the cul-de-sac lots to Hillcrest and Indian River Meadows have cul-de-sac lots with similar lot widths on them there. I don't know, I know that, again, Mr. Saunders is coming in and evaluating this kind of with fresh eyes, and they've essentially said that a subdivision variance was needed. We were going off of a presumption over the last, basically, four years, that we, we'd worked through the issues. However, with all that being said, I, I would like to take any questions because I want to make sure that we address all of your comments and as well city staff. We are going to ask for a 30-day deferral so that we can work with staff and do what we can to get this plan right, to make sure, because we, we don't want to come up here with a plan denial or a planning staff recommendation of denial. But both the applicant and, and the church have been immensely patient and done everything they can to work with the neighbors, to do everything they can to work with staff over the past four years to get this done. And really, they would, frankly, just would like to move, be able to move forward. So at that point, I will see to any other time that I have and do my best to answer your questions. Unfortunately, the engineer was not able to stick around with us this afternoon. But to whatever extent I can be an engineer, which I'm not, I will be happy to answer questions.
Any more questions? Mr. Ripley?
Yes. My memory's not always good, but, but I, I do remember the application, and I, I thought I remember drainage going into that primary drain, BNP to the north. I call it the north, I don't know which direction it is. But, but I thought there was some utilization of that in the plan we saw, the first plan we saw months ago.
Well, that, that, that's, this is the original, this is the plan that you all approved back in June 2016, yes.
Right.
I know there was, there were discussions, they, they knew they were going to have to add in another BNP at that point. So there was going to be another stormwater system. But we also know that two and a half, three years ago when this started, there's been a whole lot of development when it comes to stormwater since then. My understanding now, and I'll, I'll be happy when we come back and I'll verify with the engineer, but I did ask the applicant before I even walked up here, I said, I said, can you just verify, are we utilizing any of that existing BNP? And he said his understanding was, at this point, with the way it's been designed now, that we are not utilizing that BNP.
Way it is designed now, but I'm going to go back to the original plan. And the reason is, is that the, there was, I, I don't believe they were taking stormwater from the adjacent neighborhood at that point, were they? And was something worked out with the church later, between then and now, that provided for that? Or am I, again, my memory's not always that good.
So Hillcrest, Hillcrest Meadows up here is utilizing that BNP for their stormwater.
Okay.
They are. There, there's a, there is a, a pipeline that runs this way across the back of the property, and there's an easement, and I believe there are also pipes coming in this way into that BNP, and that was...
So with the original plan, again, you're not an engineer, and the engineers left, but how would you have drained that?
Well, there, there was, there was always, there was always a plan to, to include a BNP as the plan went forward. This is the land use plan, obviously, but, and again, you, you'll have to forgive me because I wasn't, I wasn't here either, Commissioner Ripley. But my understanding was they, they knew that there was, there was going to be an added stormwater system, and that was going to get worked out in engineering, whether they had, whether they had some kind of underground system that they utilized, or whether they put in another small pond. I, I know that there had been iterations of the plan, that there was a small pond potentially planned along the back of those lots. And again, the, that is what ended up happening as far as how it was designed, but that pond obviously got substantially bigger just because of the new stormwater regulations.
And let me ask you about the number of lots, because there's discussion this morning about if one lot could be removed, the cul-de-sac lots could be maybe loosened up, and maybe the houses brought forward slightly, and maybe there's enough room to accommodate the Southeast Expressway if that ever happened, whenever. But that seemed to be point of contention. Is that something you all, you might be willing to consider?
Yeah, yes, Commissioner Ripley. Yeah, I, with a, a plan of this, this size, and, and I'm sure you all know also, the tighter a site gets, and the fewer lots you have, the greater your costs go exponentially, right? If you lose one lot in a hundred lot subdivision, that can be diffused quite easily. If you lose one lot in a 14 lot subdivision, then your costs go up significantly. And so the applicant is very much desirous of being able to retain what's there, not, not because they're, you know, the, unfortunately, applicant and the church both would lose out on, in that scenario of losing a lot. However, that's part of the discussion of figuring out where we can come together and find that. So there has been some initial discussion about if we, if we did take one lot out, what that would look like as far as being able to get the, the 80 feet along the cul-de-sac. So that is, that is, that discussion has started. I have, I have every confidence that by February, hopefully, when we're back in front of you, that that will all be worked out, and that we'll have a plan that everyone can, can get behind.
Can you get your, can you get it worked out in proffers, and, and there a deadline?
Yes.
Yes, 21 days.
21 days before.
The proffers, the only thing that need to change in the proffers are really to add in the elevation that we just discussed, that we said we were minimal to, that staff recommended. And really, if we end up losing a lot, I mean, that takes me 30 seconds, you know, in the document to change that and to get that back to the city to, to review. So that, I don't, I don't anticipate that being a problem. I know that, speaking with the engineer who was there this morning with us at the informal session, he was, he had to head back to the office, but he was basically essentially going back to look at what he could do right away. He's going back to the office right away to see what could...
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your questions.
Anybody have any other questions?
No, the only comment I would make is that, I too, like Mr. Ripley, I, it was my thinking back in 16, that that stormwater pond that was at, to the, to the top there was part of the stormwater plan at that time. And I just, I know there was a problem with flooding in the Hillcrest Farms, and it's my, my memory, and it's getting old too, like me, but I thought they, there was a pipe going through that, it was too small, wasn't getting, and they went in and enlarging that pipe to help the Hillcrest flooding issue. But I thought there was some, some of the stormwater from this property supposed to go in there. But maybe, maybe my recollection and...
Commissioner Horsey, I'll be happy to verify that with the engineer. I, I certainly don't want to misspeak. Like I said, I, I'd ask the applicant before campaigning up just to make, to make sure. And my understanding is that because of the other stormwater system that's going in there, that, that they won't be using the capacity. But I will make sure, and I know that with, as designed right now, with the, with the new BMPs, even if any of that, even if any of that capacity is going to be used, it will be, it will most likely be negligible to the point where the, the, the new system will be able to handle the, the newer lots. So I, you know, I, again, wish, I'm not an engineer, and it's possible that some, some water could be going in there. My understanding is that that hasn't been used in the calculations, but I'll be happy to verify that.
And I too, the cul-de-sac lots down there, if you would carefully discuss that with staff and see, because I think that'd be more appealing. You wouldn't have to, I don't think you'd have to have a variance if you did that also.
Yes. So if, I know that the discussion has been, even this morning, that if we lost a lot, that we would, we wouldn't have to worry about any kind of variance. I just, it, it really comes down to, again, it's somewhat of a math problem, and, you know, time, time value here, this has been a four-year process. Everyone wants to be able to move forward and get things approved and, and continue, continue forward. But thank you for your comments.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else? All right.
I'll be here if there are any follow-up questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have two speakers, Reverend Les Smith and Bruce Malloy. Please state your name for the record.
Pastor Les Smith, Victory Baptist Church, 41 years.
Welcome.
Thank you. It's a privilege to be here. I love this great city. My wife and I started a church 41 years ago. And the city of Virginia Beach is always, rightfully so, believed in non-prejudice. That means we're not to be prejudiced, prejudiced against race, creed, or color. But yet, I find myself, and maybe the city's not aware of it, but southeastern parkway has been a difficult problem. And I wrote letters to Jim Lawson and the city because they bought, the pace building, built, the pace builders built on both sides, and they bought. It's in the geographical location of five, the highest location, southeastern parkway. They went down the street and bought the property that I owned, and I sold it to Village Church, and they bought that. I want to know, come let us reason together as a council. Why would they refuse? Is that prejudice? Why would they refuse to buy that property? We wouldn't be here today and all the stress that I've been under these many years if they'd have done what they should have done. And so the years went by, and Wayne Crosby came to me, and a good friend, I buried his father, his sister, and I loved him. And so he's a good guy. He made a contract. The church approved it, of course, voted to build on seven of the 10 acres. And it has absolutely been a nightmare for four, almost four years now, the, the planning department, which I don't know who to blame, they blame it on the builders, and the builders blame it on the city, and I'm caught in the middle. How would you like to be held to a contract as a, as a hostage and not able to do right? My, my vote would be to deny this whole thing. Let's get back to where we started from. I'm, I don't know what else to say. If they sue us, they have to sue us. I'm angry about it, but Bible says be angry and sin not. I'm 70, almost 76, and I'm tired. Any questions?
Any questions for the pastor? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next, we have Bruce Malloy. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Bruce Malloy, and I represent the neighbors that abut the, the church property. And you have wonderful memories of the first time we were in front of the commission. And I do understand that the attorney is walking in midstream here. Can we go back to the slide that shows the layout of the properties, please? And the, yeah, this is fine right here. So you are correct, initially, this was the only retention pond that was proposed in this development. And you are also correct in remembering it is the only drainage from all of Hillcrest Meadows, a 16-home subdivision. I own the home right here in the middle of this. The easement for that drainage goes between my property line and my next-door neighbors. So this has been the issue for us. And Commissioner Oliver, you actually were one of the four folks that voted against this initially when we were here, understanding what our concerns were. Since then, Wayne Crosby as a developer has done a wonderful job partnering with us. This is not a conflict. I'm not in opposition of this development. Quite frankly, I think it's a pretty good plan when we get it right. And I think Wayne is the right developer when we get this right. So what we're looking for is Wayne has helped us working with the city, and we got the drainage improved from this retention pond all the way back into the stumpy drainage area. We no longer have an issue with the retaining pond, the retention pond. What we have is an undersized pipe from the street, all of the homes, all of that neighborhood drains through there. Unfortunately, we have not been able to get the city to help us upkeep this pipe, so it is now clogged. We're operating at about 25 to 30% capacity. So unfortunately, what continues to happen is my home floods, the front of my home floods every time we get a very major storm, and I don't mean in a regular rain, but in a, in a major storm. I have water in my garage. Fortunately, I'm on a crawl space as all my neighbors are. My next-door neighbor has the same issue, because the way the street is designed, of course, high-end, high-end on each end, low in the middle where the drain is. I live at the lowest part of the neighborhood. Lucky me. So what we're hoping for here, and again, I, I trust Wayne Crosby as a developer, quite frankly, and I'm, I'm bleeping here, so we're hoping that we can get some relief with Wayne and his group in this commission to get this fixed. Because once we get this all together, this entire neighborhood, and I disagree in my understanding at least, that there will be some water from this side of the development draining into this retention pond. We need to get that fixed. My pool liner this year, for the third time in six years, is being replaced this spring because my liner continues to float $3,500 each time. My abutters each side of me, Byron Salisbury, Paul Weiss, both have done the same thing. So unfortunately, I'm out of time. The other thing I'm going to ask you to develop, to consider is, please, as we now have to raise this another eight and a half feet, we don't have that back there. This is an evil, excuse me, and it is evil. It's an even level lot. So when we raise this to develop it, we're going to be draining this entire development into the backyards, including former state delegate Ron Villanueva, who was here with me the last time. All of us abut this property, and that development's going to drain into our, our yards all along there. So please consider that as we work together to get this right. But I will share with you, Les Smith and Wayne are just wonderful people, and they have worked for four years with us as a neighborhood to get this right. So I'm hoping that we do. So thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you very, just one second, hold on.
Can I ask you a question? Or not, it's not a question. The eight and a half feet, I believe they're talking about the finished floor, they don't have to grade it up to eight and a half feet. So hopefully... So hopefully, what you're looking at, and they'll work that out, is that you just really have, they're putting, the finished floors up higher, they're going to have more piers. They'll be higher at the finished floor level and not necessarily at the ground where the earth is.
I appreciate that explanation.
I think that's what you'll say.
I will trust you to protect us and make sure we do the right thing.
I may be wrong about that, but I believe you're correct.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any other questions? Yes.
Well, it's really just for John. Jonathan, could you clarify that, just about the elevations? Because it seems like there's some confusion on...
Sure thing. We received these comments from Public Utilities on their standards, and it's actually at the very bottom of where the foundation hits the ground, the lowest adjacent grade to the lowest part of the proposed house, is where that needs to be 8.5 feet. So not really at the finished floor level necessarily, but just down where it hits the ground.
I think that certainly supports my concern.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
So any other speakers? No more speakers? Okay. Mr. Napier, would you like to come up for a rebuttal, please, or more comments on this?
No, Madam Chair. I just want to make sure that, like I said, I will get clarification regarding the existing BMP. I do think that, and Mr. Saunders, please help me on this too, we're not having to raise the site another eight and a half feet. It just needs to be the finished overall elevation of the property has to be at 8.3 feet. So I, again, not the engineer, I can't tell you where the elevation, that elevation could be at seven now. Do you happen to have that, I don't know if you have that information on you as to where, what the delta is?
No, we haven't received a full survey of the property yet, but during site plan review, that information will be provided.
And to Mr. Malloy's concern, that would make this project cost prohibitive to have to raise the entire of the eight acres, or seven acres, another eight and a half feet of where it is existing. So we'll, we'll be happy, again, to continue to work with you, and again, I guarantee we're not lifting the site another eight feet.
But any raising of that level, of course, will impact us because it is a level lot now. So if they raise it one foot...
Yeah, that's, so the, when, as we go through the engineering, all of that, all of the grading and all of those calculations, we'll be making sure that the existing stormwater management facilities are taking that water. However, however they drain, they won't be draining back into Hillcrest Meadows. So that's, that is, I know that's something that we work through in actual site plan review with the city to make sure that that's, that is the case, so.
Right. And so it is, it is my understanding that you are before us asking for a deferral. Is that correct?
Yes, Madam Chair. That's correct.
Okay, great.
Just, to February.
To February, exactly. And so you have, you have a lot of ground to cover.
Yes.
And I'm sure you will get that done to the satisfaction of the, of the neighbors and of the pastor and of the city.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Mr. Redmond.
I think it would be helpful, and I, I would appreciate it if you would convey, next time we do this, we'd kind of like that engineer here.
I agree.
I think it was unhelpful that he was not.
Yeah, I will, I will take a little bit of responsibility for that, honestly, just because he was here with us this morning. He had asked me, and I said, you know what, I believe, given the comments this morning and the conversations that we had, that we were going to ask for a deferral. And he said, okay, well, I'm going to, I need to head back to the office if that's the case. I don't think he was anticipating me getting up and having this full conversation with you, so I'll, I'll take the responsibility. I will, I will make sure that he's here for any subsequent conversations, because obviously there are questions that he'll need to answer that he, only he will be able to answer, but...
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we're going to close it and open it to any of the commissioners. Don't know that, if not, yes, sir.
I do, I do have one thing, and I was at a Civic League meeting last night with senior public works staff, and they, they said, you know, if there's, there's any issue with the public stormwater infrastructure, and if there's, you know, clogging, you know, would appear to be damaged pipes, that you need to contact them. So I would, Mr. Malloy, I hope that, you know, you...
Multiple times, sir.
Multiple times, okay.
So on that, since there seems to be having a problem with, with that line...
I'll take it.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's a guarantee.
Sure, Tom.
Guarantee that they will do a work order. I'm not going to guarantee they're going to fix it, but...
I guarantee you.
They will inspect it.
So, yes, Mr. Redmond?
I would move for a 30-day deferral of the application.
One second.
Okay. By a recorded vote of 10 to 0, item number eight, Traditional Concepts, Inc. and Victory Baptist Church of Virginia Beach, Inc., has been deferred.
All right. I think that is our last item for the day, and is there any other, for, any other business?
Madam Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I might, I would like to say that I've enjoyed working with Mr., with Mr. Frankenfield for many, many, many years, and Jimmy for a couple, three years, and Robert for many, many years. Robert, you've been around longer than I thought you had, but anyway, I just want to say that, that they've all worked in a very professional way, and some of them have surprised me in many ways, and they already know that, but I wish them well in their retirement, and I hope we see, I hope to see some of the younger ones back in Virginia Beach in the near future. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. And so on that, my fellow commissioners and I would like to thank everyone for attending today, and thank the planning director and his staff for all their hard work, as always. And I guess that's it for the day. Thank you.[1735.83]